Miriam, from another state than one that I thought seemed to fit what we're doing, is they had a competitive process and they had companies come in and say, "We're going to do this much with the money and we'll build where in this area." And they evaluated and then awarded some of them and not all of them. So, I don't know. That's probably not your, is that your bill?
I can speak to that. So additionally, in those July 27th, that made huge, a major change that the Treasury has undertaken, is that previously if you were spending the ARCA funds as ARCA funds, right, or you ran some ARCA funds down to the EDC for them to spend as ARCA funds. So you discussed ways to not do that, but if you were going to do that, you had to comply with the federal procurement rules. So there's sort of federal law above the on state law for procurement. So what you may have seen from another state is a mix of that state's public purchasing and procurement laws and also the federal procurement layered over top of it. Now, if you're expending revenue loss funds, Treasury has noted that the subparts of uniform guidance on federal awards, which include the federal procurement rules, do not apply when you're expending revenue loss funds. And they have that authority under the final rule. They've sort of put that into themselves that at any point we can say certain parts of uniform guidance don't apply. So now, the only obligation when you're doing funds using the ARCA funds directly is to comply with Indiana state law and the characterization of broadband development under Indiana, in sort of in this vein, where you're giving money and they're going to go build the network and they're going to operate the network, right? And all the counties really receiving is, to a certain extent, the service of having the network operating. That, we'd characterize that as professional services, where they're providing the professional service of broadband development, because the county doesn't own anything. The county's not having infrastructure built. The county is bringing in a professional entity to do what it does best, which is broadband development. And so, where other units have did it, it's usually been because the federal procurement rules required that. Typically, county was doing that. Typically, county did have to bid, but that's because the fair funds are largely not revenue loss funds. They have too much money. Whereas here, where it's all revenue loss funds, that federal procurement is not implicated.
Yeah. I'm Scott. I'm going to go back. I don't have any other questions.
If we could, explain the involvement and availability of OKRA funds for last month availability.
Yeah. So the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, which is OKRA, will be having a substantial amount of funds over the next thirty-six months available for communities to leverage the current programs and networks that are in the county. So what this project will allow us to do in the repayment of those funds is to be a multiplier for the state dollars that are available. So we'll be able to move quickly, a lot more quickly than having to go through the whole entire process, this process all over again. So...
Is it a matching percentage?
Matching situation. Yes. Yeah. So OKRA is going to come in and pay for some homes to be hooked up, but not every one of them, and they'll be funding gaps in almost all of them. And so, we're working with them directly. And so, Scott Rudd, who's going to be on our team for this deal, helped stand up the broadband office for Lieutenant Governor. And so, he's going to be able to help us pinhole where those gaps are and we can fill those gaps on the state side. So state will come in and pay sixty percent of the connection for a certain area, so say it's Jefferson Township or Carrollton Township, and then there's a hundred homes. We'll be able to take the reimbursement funds and go in and maximize that connection. So...
That's a good question.
So there is more money coming available, but having kind of liquidity locally helps us be able to be laser focused on where that connection is.
So it seems like if we just let you have all the money back, we'd have all this problem solved, without worry about all this other business.
No, that's not...
Then we forward...
I think we're going to be able to put a big dent in it, but we don't know what the landscape of broadband looks like in seven or eight years. And be able to have a resource available to be able to deploy it at that time is going to be...
Well, I'm saying, so you're paying us back. It seems like that's what's holding everything up, is the split coming back to us. Is that where I'm at?
I think we just need to know the impact on the budget now. I think Dustin has answered the questions, ARCA related questions. Now, just whether the other revenue coming back wrecks your budget, because anytime you got money coming back, the state looks at that as, well, they use that to determine what your levy is. And it affects your tax.
So what's the, in your mind, how much is this all going to cost? The broadband for the whole county with OKRA, with everything?
I don't think anybody knows that number. I know that the investment that the county is making now is going to greatly, I think, enhance our community...
Act?
I'm going to say this, that I don't think there'll be any more resources locally that'll need to be acquired. So this is going to allow us to see the revolving loan fund that we can tritulate out over a decade to get this connection problem shot at. So I think the state's going to invest millions. I think the federal government's going to continue to invest millions. But all their money is going to service providers. That's the problem. That's been the problem. And I'm on record, like, that's been the problem. The government tried to solve a problem by getting it to the service providers, and they're not, they're only picking who they want to connect. And we've got to empower the community to be able to have leverage to connect the homes instead of the providers. So yeah, I'm confident that as long as I'm in this community for the next thirty years, that this will be the investment that's going to help get us connected and then hopefully we can take this money and leverage state and federal dollars for more. So I'm sorry, I don't...
No, but I just, I just don't know whether it'd be coming back from the loan from us, that you'll go to OKRA.
Correct. Yeah. Having the funds available that can go leverage them, that will empower us to get connected faster, and our goal is to get connected faster.
So you'll use the payback money to leverage that?
Yes, ma'am.
I think so. Half of it will need to come to us later, probably, for the other half of it to play.
Yeah. Broadband is just a segment of what we do. My goal is to get this started and begin solving it, and then we've got other, we've got businesses to recruit. And if this is just a segment of what we're doing, and our goal, I think our board has made it clear that this is, the primary mission is to get this initial thought, I think, is to get things started and then...
So say it affects our tax rate, which I'm just saying the worst scenario, it's going to affect our tax rate, would there be a way that you could keep that money, all of it, and use it all for broadband, so you wouldn't have to come back to the loan?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I think it was part of the issue, if there was that one that other, you need to see actions.
Yeah, I mean, we could put together a plan, sure. If there's needs, everybody has...
I think the big, yeah, he's right. The big problem with me and several other people is other EDC projects. We don't know what those are, that if it was related to the broadband...
And we can clearly articulate in the contract. So like, we're not, we can be bound to whatever language is in the contract with, and I don't think our organization has a problem with that at all. We just wanted to make sure that...
I just don't want to mess up our budget. And, you know, our finance, you know, our repertoire with the state and everything else, that we got that money back and then we just stuck it into County General. I just don't, I just don't think that's kosher.
I had a conversation with Jake, what was that, two weeks ago, I think, after the folks were out there for the previous meeting. And, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's still taxpayer dollars. And, you know, my opinion, my understanding is that the commissioners and the council have appropriation powers over how tax dollars are spent. And I think I alluded to, for Jake, that I think appropriation and, you know, transparency, you know, okay, this is where, if you, you know, if they keep the 1.6, this is where 200,000 of it's going. It's going to, you know, run lines to underserved or maybe unserved townships in the county. But I think appropriation powers are legitimate in going forward, and I think that verbiage needs to be in a potential contract. If, you know, this does affect our levy and our tax rate and all the money stays with them, I still think, A, transparency, B, appropriation powers from all ten folks, elected folks, is appropriate.
Yeah. I think this is going to be a budgetary item that's outside of our operating expenses. Obviously, we're bound by contract, even the one we're in with the council, with the commissioners now. We have to provide a yearly budget of all of our finances, so it's not like there's no, there's no, every pocket's invisible, or it's visible. So our goal would be, however the appropriation control is on this, that we hammer out, you'll get a budget every year of where we are on the broadband fund. If you see a need and you say, "Hey, Jake, there's a need here," we have those. It's just, the goal would be to have it available for the community. It isn't, it isn't the, I think, to your concern. Other projects would not be the most suitable deployment of these funds, so...
I've got a question. What I'm hearing is that, is that, it's constantly is that the council would want to be able to appropriate the money if it's in the hands of the EDC, right? Is that right, Scott? I don't want to mischaracterize what you said.
Yes.
What if, what if all the money stays in the EDC and it's restricted to broadband?
I think once you give it to somebody, you can't appropriate it.
They do have, I mean, they sit on our board, Scott's on our board, Josh is on our board, so we can, I'm willing to be as transparent as possible, like, I think...
Right, but that's not...
What Scott was saying was, subject to annual appropriation or additional appropriation, not just oversight. I think, I don't think you were just talking about oversight, right, Scott, or not?
In a nutshell, I mean, maybe not every dollar, but in a nutshell, it was...
But I think if they, if you give that to them...
It no longer becomes taxpayer dollars.
Right. And it would be, with the stipulation that it's only used for broadband advancement.
And I pretty much think county government, it pretty much...
It would.
With OKRA, it would. We give back.
Over the, yeah, over this ten, this next decade that we're doing this.
And I think that'd make it easier for everybody. I mean, I didn't want to lose that money, because we could use it for other projects, but if he's going to come back and ask for more money later to help out with it...
I don't either, but in the long run, we want to give it to, if it affects the tax rate, I mean, if it affects different areas.
I...
I don't want to have to pay anything back.
I think it'll affect it.
And, you know, this all may be a little bit, this entire conversation may be a bit preponderant, because we don't know what the effect on the tax rate and the levy may be.
Well, when I talked to Jackie during our budget, which is our AIC representative that helps us with the budget, she stated sternly that it goes back to ARCA, and she might not know the new rules. I don't know. But, you know, it's always been instilled in an auditor that when you pay something back, or when you hand it out and it's paid back or reimbursed, it goes into where it came from. And that's where she's coming from, but...
I think the characterization of reimbursement may sort of be inaccurate to the way that these funds would be expended, because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that they were reimbursing you for the grant. The way we would characterize it now, under the new rules, under the world we're operating in now, is that you were making a loan to the EDC. And so that would be loan income, not a reimbursement coming back.
Well, reimbursement, repayment, whatever, but if it's a loan...
It may, it may change.
And loan is even, take the word.
But, if your guidance comes back from the OJF and SBOA, that it can go back and it doesn't affect the rate, then, I mean, I think we still look at that as an option. Probably fifty percent comes back. If it doesn't, then, then I think we can kind of figure out what that pathway is.
Well, and I was, I was going to say that revolving loan funds are sort of equally, equally okay and appropriate. So, you know, so if all the money was going to stay at the EDC, this sort of actual way that we would describe the project is essentially, you were creating a revolving loan fund that's administered by the EDC for broadband development. And they, and the first loan would be for the ring, and then, you know, that money would come back into the fund and it revolves out of the fund for broadband projects added to the item. But those specifically in those FAQs, the Treasury identifies that revolving loan funds are appropriate use, and that at the point of making the grant to the fund, that money is considered expended for ARCA purposes.
Could you send that to me?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I have a whole, I have a whole big spooky detailed email about all of this.
Well, I just want a short version.
I mean, you got a goal. The realistic goal of this is to, in ten years, have four thousand homes hooked up and still have 1.5 million dollars in it. I mean, that would be the goal of this, the revolving loan piece. So the goal isn't just to expense the funds to get them down. That's what every county has been doing, and they, they're getting thirty percent of their connections, then they're out of money. And now they're looking at, how do we cover this next round? How are we going to, how are we going to cover the gaps with OKRA and pay the matching grants? I might be coming back, but we want to do that. The goal would be, keep the times in the revolving loan time and keep something away.
So you're going to bring back Ted some information and Beth, and we can discuss this with you next week? Is that all right?
Yes, and then we just need appropriation from the council. That will be obviously the...
It has been advertised and it will be on the October 20th.
I'll be out of statement. I think we have a good enough team to, you guys are okay with that, so...
Ours is the 17th, ours is the 20th, we're still planning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be in the state office, but that way.
Okay, we have a hearing scheduled for ten o'clock. I guess I need to call the board to order on a public hearing on the resolution of Carroll County Jail Project, BOT committee, resolution recommending the acceptance of the proposal of BW construction. Now, we have Sheriff, we have Scott, and the three of us here, so we're all 100% here on this committee. And the Board of Commissioners and other members of the Carroll County BOT Committee met in a duly noticed open meeting on September 19th, 2022, at 1:00 PM in the Commissioners' room right here, to share the evaluations and the proposals submitted for the Carroll County Jail project. The members of the committee who participated in the evaluation were Ryan Brown, Steve Pearson, Lauryn Hill, Scott Ayers, and Toad Leslie. Following the, following is a summary of evaluations and a basis for the resolution recommending BW construction to the Board of Commissioners. Unanimous consensus of the participating members of the committee is that BW Construction's successful experience in construction of jail facilities was unmatched by the other offerer. Additionally, the preferences checked for the four projects were all positive in regard to BW's past performance. It was also the unanimous consensus of the participating members of the committee that BW's key staff have superior communication skill, as exhibited in its interview, and the BW staff was better organized. No advantage was cited by the participating committee members for either offerer in regard to effective trade contractor engagement. Accordingly, the committee adopted its resolution dated September 19th, 2022, recommending BW construction fulfilling filing and public accessibility, together with foregoing statement of the basis for the committee's recommendations. Okay, so here's the outline for our hearing here. The, I have to ask Beth here, the notice of the hearing was published?
Yes.
Right? And the statement of basis of the committee's recommendation and resolution were available in the public office. They are, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I want to give members of the public opportunity to address the Board of Committee's recommendations. If anybody here that wants to address the situation of the committee of the five of us who have selected BW and are making a recommendation to the Commissioners to select BW, is there anyone who has a comment on that? Am I saying that wrong? I'm getting all tongue tied here. And then also, I want to give opportunity to members of the committee, opportunity to address the Board. Toad, Scott, or either of you two gentlemen, do you have anything you need to say about this situation of our recommendation to the Board of Commissioners?
I think we chose the right BOT to do our project.
Well, I do too. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the committee's recommendation and accept the proposal of BW construction as the BOT provider for Carroll County Jail project. You'll make that motion. You'll provide a second. So with that, I would like to call for a vote of the Commissioners on the selection of BOT, of BW construction to do, to be the BOT provider. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. We have, that motion has passed and we have selected BW construction as the BOT provider for Carroll County. And then, I don't know if there's anything more to say, so I think unless there's further comment from anyone, we need to adjourn this section of the public meeting. Okay, so I have a second and a motion, a motion and a second to adjourn the public here. This, I was asleep last night, I think. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Okay, you passed that by. And I, I know that was kind of a formal way to do it, but that's what we're required to do it. We look forward to working with you and getting this thing done. And I want to publicly comment that I am very pleased so far with working with you, and I think we've made a big leap forward in that, back in March, I brought forth discussion of possibly changing an architect, and that the consensus was that was going to improve the situation. And at that time, the representative from our architect said that he thought that he could have this, the plans already by June. Tracy, one of the council, said, "Really? By June?" She said, "Well, July, maybe." Well, it came around to the end of September and we hadn't seen anything yet from them. And I asked BW if they could use their cattle prod and move this thing along a little bit, and they did. And lo and behold, out came, as far as I could tell, finished product. As far as here is the plans for this jail, which we hadn't got that until you guys stepped in and did it, and I appreciate that. So I think we're on the track now. We've got BW on board, we have a design, and we're ready to build the jail. Any comment on anything here? With that, I think all we have left of our commission meeting, and I have just buried the agenda, we have health board appointments to make. And I have a question about that for Ted. On board appointments at this time, we have always been mandated to maintain an equality of Democrat, Republican on these boards, right?
We've already done this.
Is that going away, or?
No, it's not. And the health doctor has given the chase. She went through and she went, did the Democrat, Republican, independent, and there are some that did not get done, because we were told that they did not have to be removed. So there are four appointments.
We have four, yeah, I was just...
Four, and one is to appoint someone to finish up the year, but no appointment for next year.
Does it say that appointment for next year, or does it just say to fill out the, all I saw was just to fill out the, fill out the...
Where?
Our health doctor announced that.
I don't, I didn't...
No, no. We have, we have doctor, appointments that the Board of Health is requesting that we endorse of Dr. Christopher Huffer for, on the health board. I don't know, Sarah Lucia Rich? I just know Sarah Rich, so I don't know.
She's the one that's replacing the one that resigned, which was Brian Wagner.
She was replacing...
Brian Wagner.
Who?
Dr. Brian, I think it's Brian Wagner.
Yeah, it says right there.
Yeah, Brian Wagner, yeah. Right. Oh, I see, I got two separate ones here, though.
I got two here.
Got two on Sarah Rich. One is to replace till the end of the year, and the other one is to, one is to replace her on the board, for full term. Now, I don't know Dr. Christopher Huffer, other than to say hi to him on the street. That's how much I know him. And he does not live in Carroll County. He lives in Clarksville. He has considerable amounts of land in Carroll County. He is a landowner in Carroll County. Sarah Rich, Sarah Lucia Rich, is a Carroll County resident, a fine and south of Chicago resident. We have Denise Strasser, and this is a reappointment for her, and Dr. Benjamin Anderson. He's a Carroll County resident, a physician, and is with the Camden Health Center, Locust Board Hospital. Now, of those, I think some of this falls within the Bailey Act of the county chairman. There are none, no Republicans of these.
Doesn't fall anything on the Republican chairman.
What?
It said, "None of it falls on the county chairman."
Okay, well, so it's just up to us to monitor that we keep it an equal, I mean...
The health board does. The health, when she went through, she did that. She went and asked, and she had them sign what they are, and the health board is the one that does that.
So my question is, are we mandated to keep an equal amount of Democrats and Republicans on there, or why? Where does the independent factor get into it? That's what I don't understand. Dustin, you didn't do it at all, you don't think?
I would be, I would guess no, because they're not associated with any major political party. And given that this rule must have been written.
So we're going to, the essence is almost wind up with a Democrat board or a few independents?
No. You have, you will have, well, you'll have one, yeah, you're probably right, one Republican, I wrote it down. I hope that's the same as saying that, and three Democrats and one to three independent.
Of the seven. Three, three, and one. Does that make any difference to us, Ted? Then we have...
I'm trying to get to the statute.
Oh, you're looking at it right now, good. It doesn't make me any difference, but I don't want to step off the end of a thing here with the...
Is that a state form?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just asked at the bottom for political affiliation.
It says that there, it requires that no more than four of the seven board members be the same political party, right down at the bottom, or you can sign.
Okay, so not, it's not an equal amount, it's just not more than four.
Well, the seven.
I see, all right. Sixteen, twenty, two point four.
Okay. I didn't really got a lot of...
Can I have something?
So it is, anybody have a comment on anybody we're applying to the board here? Is there a question of what we're doing?
No, I was just asking Beth for a copy of what you have, because I don't have a list of how many...
That's what I do, a copy, a copy.
Yeah. Yeah, it just cites the location, it says, "Requires that no more than four of the seven board members be from the same political party." location and says requires that no more than four of the seven board members be from the same political party, and we are not doing that. We only have three Republicans, three, three Democrats, three independents, and one Republican on the board. I always thought this was silly. I've always thought of it. I remember one time, I remember we had an awful time finding another Democrat to get on the board because.
She also stated that, um, the person that the Sarah Rich is replacing is a doctor, but she is a, I think it says registered nurse. And that is acceptable. Doc Barker already checked that out.
Well, I've known Sarah Rich for thirty years, I imagine, maybe more than that. Fine person. She was, I don't know if she's still, but she was a nurse for Carroll School Corporation. Before that, she was a nurse for Tippity County Health Department. I would entertain any motion or comments from either of you on these appointments.
So we have to have like a, a two part. Because once, uh, finish out a term, then a reappointment for the next year, so it's like a two part motion.
Yeah.
So my first part of my motion is to have Sarah Rich replace Doctor Wagner on the board to finish out his term.
Okay, just stop there. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I got a motion and a second to appoint Sarah Rich to, uh, fill the position held by, previously by Doctor Brian Wagner. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And my second part of the motion is Doctor Huffer, Ms. Rich, Ms. Strasser, and Doctor Anderson being reappointed for the following.
Next year.
Next year.
So I can't remember the three years, I can't remember how many years it is for the term.
Till, until two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, wait, it'd be true.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, until twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six is the one.
Yeah.
Dr. Wagner.
It could, they could be, because we were told that they, we didn't have to reappoint.
Doctor Anderson is in twenty-five.
Right, so is Denise Strasser.
Denise Strasser's twenty-fifth. Uh, Mr. Doctor Huffer and Ms. Rich will be until twenty-six, so they've been on a year. So the other will take a little longer.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, they are appointed. Motion passed. Next side, work one of Lincoln.
I have not received any information from.
Pardon?
I have not received any information on, Jake said he would give me some information. I forgot to talk to him today. But I do not have anybody that has stated, so that needs to be tabled.
Okay.
I'll put motion to table, work one.
A motion, a second, the table, and work one until, uh, next week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Beth, motion passed. And we have, uh, a date for the twenty twenty-three edit requests.
Yes, I, um, we need to have a date that I can tell people to come in and present their edit request to you.
When did we do that last year?
Last year we did a little bit earlier, but we've done the budget later this year and we were focusing more on that, um, because once you do it, it has to go to the council, but it's not, uh, it's for the twenty twenty-three, so we're not, we're still gonna have to do an additional in, uh, January to get those requests done that are approved by the council.
Okay, so we get November seventh? Or only do before then? I like, myself, myself, just to be able to have your chance to.
Yeah, against three weeks.
Yeah.
I want to make the motion to, to November seventh at the regular commissary meeting.
One second. I have a motion and a second that we will receive, uh, requests for edit budget consideration on November the seventh during the regular meeting. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so any, any organization or community that needs to get in on that, why they need to talk to us. Next up, we have a joint meeting with the council. And we're gonna have that, it says here to change it to November seventh at one P M. Is that all right, Scott?
Yes.
We had it set for October seventeenth and then I told them two of those members could not be here. They requested, and I asked all the council if they could be here on that day, and they said yes.
Thank you, Beth. So, we need a motion to be effective. There will be a joint meeting with the council at one P M on November the seventh. So the, the move, second, okay. So I got a motion and a second for the joint meeting with the council and commissioners on November seventh at one P M. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed. Resignation of E nine one one lead coordinator. I don't know a thing about this.
Did you send us an email?
There's something in your mailbox. You might not have got your mail yet.
Mine was a payment in federal, first of me, and then I also got an email last Thursday. You said on that board there. Did you know this was coming?
You know me so well.
You didn't have to give me that, no, I didn't think.
So I, uh, I reached out to, um, Mr. Fentner. I think, um, what he talked about, um, yeah, it is E nine one one, but there are more than just nine one one operators. They're emergency personnel because that can be a full call. So, in my opinion, is in my opinion, that it should fall under Mr. Fentner's emergency management. That he needs to have a delegate that works in nine one one. So Mike, Mike will take care of the paperwork. Um, the person he decides to be his assistant does the grunt work of training and scheduling and stuff like that, Mr. Fentner will be the other end of it, kind of separated. And whatever they, he would recommend to the council and pay for the other, we'd have to have two new job descriptions, I think. But I think this would solve our nine one one issue.
My statute doesn't be nine one one fall within the Bailey Record of Sheriff. Sheriff, do you know that or not? I don't, I don't know.
I could be wrong, but not that I'm aware of.
That's, that's why Mr. Burns gave it up, because half of it was E nine one one. The other half was sheriff's department dispatchers. And when Tony Burns gave it up when I worked there, it all became nine one one, and that's when we ended up with. Who was the first director?
Mr. Creed?
Uh, yeah.
Huh?
It was either Kate Creed or J D.
J D. So that's how we ended up where we're at. And really hasn't really functioned that well like that, because they are a working director. This way, the director is doing the end of the paperwork. He's making sure everybody's qualified. His person, he decides to choose to be his right-hand man, because they have to work together. Because right now, we got just nitpicking with each other. Who can do this, who can do that? And with us being in charge of it, we're not there enough to, well, put our thumb on the real issues that turn to be fixed. And I think Mr. Fentner will fit that bill perfectly with his knowledge that he has helped us with already with the ready. Mike, was I saying anything wrong there? Besides showing your name out there and doing it.
My opinion, it's, it's gotta go underneath somebody. Whether it goes back underneath the sheriff's department, if he wants to take it back on, or if it comes underneath another department, it, just my opinion. I've been here four years and we've gone through two, two directors, three directors. And it, it just doesn't seem that the, uh, the personnel are getting the full benefit that they should.
Doesn't seem like the personnel is what?
Receiving the full benefit that they should, that they're not getting the full investment that they should be getting, getting trained the way they should be as a, as an emergency response, an emergency dispatcher vies a nine one one dispatcher. And the differences between them is a nine one one dispatcher takes the call and they farm it out to a police dispatcher, a fire dispatcher, or an EMS dispatcher. And that an emergency dispatcher takes the call from the point that they receive it all the way to conclusion. So they have, our dispatchers have, which their emergency dispatchers are taking that call from the beginning to the complete end.
Which is what we are, right?
Which, that's what we are. So they have to be trained in all three aspects. Fire, EMS, and law enforcement. And that, and I'm not quite sure if they're receiving all the training that they need. So if we.
And how, how, how could you, what steps will you, I'm not interviewing, I'm just asking. What steps will you take to make sure this gets done?
I think by bringing in the right assistant coordinator, whatever you want to call that, number two person. If you accept her, or Brittany's resignation, if you accept it and you let her go back down to being a, uh, behind the console dispatcher, that'll put them back at full staff. So we should have two across the board now, instead of one working here, one working there, and then we have two on sometimes and we have two on here, and then we're back to one. So we should have two across the board. And that, um, we're gonna have to look at adjusting some pay schedules in that the, the part-time dispatchers are getting like twelve dollars. You're not getting very many part-time dispatchers coming in for twelve dollars an hour.
No.
You know, when they can go to McDonald's or something and get fifteen. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to get changed. And since it's with Lit and P S A P taxes that are coming in, that they receive, it's not so much coming out of county general. So maybe there can be some readjustments in there and that. Um, this kind of came at a good time, but it came at a bad time, because they're doing budgets right now, but they're almost done, so it's kind of, you know, we're, we're behind schedule with, if this came a few months ago, it would have been a little bit better.
But there's nothing we can do concerning when we get a resignation.
Right, and there is nothing we can do, right.
So how do we go about, uh, with the job descriptions? We're, I mean, we could turn it over to our.
H R?
Yeah, our, our, what's our.
We do H R and we ask that, um, our, our personal advisor to recreate.
But we have to have some ideas ourselves as to what we want to plug into these holes. So I think we're gonna have to arrive at salary and we're gonna have to arrive at whose responsibility is a lot of, senior in the, in the, uh, assistant. Go ahead.
So do we convene a meeting of the E nine one one board?
Right.
Like, like soon to discuss what gets pulled out of what and what, you know, what jobs, you know, comes out of that coordinator position and what would it?
I think it should be like best assistant, first deputy, whoever's your second commander, if you take it, has the same responsibilities as you, they just, like, so if you're gone, they step up to do your portion of the emergency service and the dispatcher.
Right, but that, so what you're essentially saying is that you're gonna bring in another emergency manager, but also have, see, that's.
No, no, you're, you're still gonna be emergency manager, but, but the person, whoever you decide, I keep saying to you, decide, has the same responsibilities as you as the nine one one or emergency service.